Good morning. We'll call the meeting order for the Brookings County Commission for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge. Number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. And we have one person signed up, Jeanette Gibbons. Morning.
Good morning. My favorite approach, which is, I think, a world in which we spread more love and kindness is going to get us a lot farther, a lot faster. So, my sign is up, and even when my sign isn't up, it's up with me. Free hugs are available, and you'd be amazed at how quickly you can get a smile from somebody by offering a free hug. I think I'll have that t-shirt pretty soon. I keep coming across quotes that resonate with me quite well, and, again, along with the theme of loving one another and helping each other more, Terrence Ingles states, "Only what is real will remain." Truth equals, real equals truth, truth equals love. Therefore, real equals love. Only love is real. What does concern me a little bit right now is more rumblings about COVID. And we went through that three years ago. I thought we were way beyond that now with everything that we know, what we've learned, what we've seen firsthand in our families, our friends, and others in our community. But I came across a recording that I listened to and actually created a transcript of it just to make people aware of what power they have to protect themselves. So, this is by a gentleman named Abil Leroy. You've probably heard that another round of medical tyranny is planned, and your heart is telling you, "I'm not going to comply." But do you know the lawful standing for your noncompliance? I'm going to just say it now for you, and I'm doing it for myself as well as to remind me of what I need to do if I'm ever face-to-face with a would-be enforcer who is trying to act under illegitimate and unlawful authority. I need your noncompliance to help me with my noncompliance and vice versa. The first thing to understand is that legislation is not law. An executive order is definitely not law, and any other decree or regulation issued by politicians or bureaucrats is not law, never was, never will be. But even people who claim to be for medical freedom, including lawyers, make the mistake, and it's a colossal mistake, of calling legislation law. I will rebuke anyone who says, for example, "Congress passed such-and-such a law." No, they didn't. Congress is not capable of passing laws. Congress is a corporation. The US government is a corporation. All they can write is company policy. Same goes for any government or parliament in any country, and almost all of the courts for that matter. If any would-be enforcer says to you, "You have to do this. This is the law," or "This is the mandate," you say, "Show me the document that says this, and show me where I signed it. Without your signature, these corporate contracts are not worth the air they're written on." Now, this goes on, and I'm not sure if I could cover it all in the time that I have allotted here, but it discusses things like the Magna Carta, the Hippocratic Oath. Our country was sabotaged and overthrown back in 1871. And it's kind of a messy, murky story, but there is evidence and documentation of this happening. And I've come across numerous sources that describe it. I've looked into the documents myself. And another one that I recently listened to was a lady named Miki Klann, M-I-K-I-K-L-A-N-N. And she has very, very good video on Rumble, about 34 minutes long. And she describes how we get ourselves out of this mess. And it is by us establishing our authority, you and I. We have authority. We have individual standing. Our authority comes from God, not from man. And at the end of this piece by Abil, he also states, "The only two laws that we really are answerable to, number one, to love the Lord your God with all your heart and all of your mind, and to love others as you love yourself." So, anyone that would push a mandate on me, I would ask, "You want me to do this to you?" And the answer, I think, is obviously no. Now, I hope this mandate, COVID revisited, does not come to fruition in our community. I think we're a community of close-knit people who do care about each other, and we're also pretty common sense when it comes right down to it. COVID-1, first round was different. That was scary. We didn't really know what was going on. Took us a while to get ourselves collected and figure things out. And then now we've had three years of seeing the repercussions of COVID and mandates with our children, the elderly, people in our community. So, I'm going to finish with my favorite line. I'll start over here. I love you, Robert. I love you, Martin. I love you, Brian. I love you, Jenna. I love you, Kelly. I love you, Mike. I love you, Larry. I love you, Sean. I love you, Ryan. I love you, Stacy. I love you, Dan. And I love you, Montel. Anyone else that I don't know your names, I love you too. And be sure to cash in on the free hugs when you see me, or if you don't want a hug from me, I'll give you a coupon that you can share with someone you really do want a hug. Thank you.
Next on the move to approve.
Move of approval.
Second. Discussion, comments, changes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda items. These include the minutes, these travel education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, human services report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
There's second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Comments? Yep.
When we approved the additional funding for Samara Avenue at the last meeting, I'd just like to clarify, Samara Avenue is also known as 464th Avenue and also County Road Number Five.
All right. Any other comments? Consent agenda. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number six, routine business, letter A, approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, comments on the claims. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, under six, is department head reports. Start off with Brian.
Pretty short report this morning. Brookings County 38, the paving project, where leveling lift was completed last week. Final lift was started last week, should be completed by the end of this week. Following that, Brookings County crews will be placing shoulder materials along the road, but there'll just be minor delays as far as traffic goes up there for that. County Roads Four, Six, and Eight, heading on when we can get some oil. Those are going to be fog sealed, and then, following the completion of the fog seal, we'll be striping those roads. As the contractor that was awarded, the state striping contract for the Aberdeen region will be in. Notoriously, those are looking at mid-to-late September, early October, but those will be striped following that. Got Cruz gravel in Brookings County 46, and as far as the projects going on around the Brookings area on South Main and 34th Avenue, there's progress meetings this week that I will be attending, so that's all I got.
Questions, Brian? All right. Thank you. Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning.
Just a quick, just a quick this report was written on, or it was completed on Friday with 57 total inmates, but this morning we have 65. Of our own Brookings County inmates, as of Friday, was 28, but over the weekend, we probably raised that two or three over the weekend and stuff. If you notice, US Marshal Service, we have 18. Sioux Falls evidently is full with their own inmates and stuff, so they had six or seven inmates left over, so we had the room, so we took them. So, regular contracts for 10. If we keep our numbers down, I'm sure we can handle eight, 20. So, that's not an issue. I always thought maybe we could go up to 20 eventually. It's a little faster than I planned, but anyway, so. Other than that, it's just been a busy, the last two weeks have been busy. Calls for service are up. Of course, now with fall coming, grass without rain, cows out. So, in between domestics and everything else, accidents and fires, had several, not several, but hayfires, and I don't know if it's, they're putting them up damp or what, what's going on. But it's just not a few bales, it's a bunch of bales. So, yeah, the guys have been busy. So, it's just been a busy August. So, I hope September brings, is a little slower for it. So, unless you guys, that's it. Unless you guys have some questions.
Question from Marty.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Bob.
Good morning. September is the national at the federal level, we're going to have our big event near the end of September when we, the United Ways having a big family night out day, so we'll have a big event, and we'll get you the flyers on that. So, August 31st, I was on vacation. I was at the state fair, but I broke vacation for an hour and attended a Teams meeting on drainage, the Drainage Subcommittee that Drainage Board has designated. We had a meeting on Teams, so online, and they gave us an update on exactly where we're at. And NRCS was on the, on the line, and they, they've now got the plan that everyone else has got, and they're reviewing the plan. And we initially was going to try to have a public meeting in October, but that's, that's probably going to end up being November now because NRCS is getting a new engineer on board, and they want, they requested time to look at the plan, give us an intelligent response. So, we'll, we'll keep you updated on that one, and I'll get that, the meeting minutes, I can get out to the whole board later on. September 3rd, obviously, we had a heat advisory issued over the weekend. Public Utilities Commission, big decision on a CO2 pipeline. It's supposed to be tomorrow. I talked to PUC Commissioner Nelson out at the state fair, and it's interesting, they're, they're under a lot of, lot of different, different ropes being tugged, every which, which way. I told them hang in there, and they'll make their decision on Wednesday.
Bob, are they making for both pipelines, or is that Summit and Navigator, or?
I believe it's just the Navigator one.
Just the Navigator, okay.
I don't think Summit's actually applied yet, from what, from what my understanding. And I've been forwarding all that to correspondence.
Right.
There's so much correspondence being forwarded on that. It's, yeah, but I do believe that, which is strange, because when they had the public meeting here, it was more Summit getting nailed than it was Navigator. But I, when you look at it all from the PUC level and the county commission level, the two are very similar. Obviously, one doesn't affect Brookings County at all, and the other one does, obviously. But as far as permitting the CO2 pipeline statewide, they're going to be very similar. And they'll go through the same thing when, when the other pipeline applies. There's a big zoning meeting tonight. We got our regular zoning meeting, and prior to the regular zoning meeting, we got a joint jurisdiction area zoning meeting, which is going to be rather interesting, I would think. Former Commissioner Larson, he did a good job. He came to the poker run on Saturday up at the Dakota Bank Center and represented Brookings County quite well in helping our disabled veterans out. And last but not least, I've got a whole bunch of COVID-19 test kits available in the office. They expire in December, so no pressure, but if you feel you need to test for COVID, stop on by. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Misty.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have a very update you folks on the safety issue we had at the weed department with the rain gutters and also repairing the tin on the west side of the building where the heat exhaust comes out of our building. That is, a copy of that estimate, I believe, is in your packet. I thought I gave you a copy of it. It's going to cost about $3,920 to replace the gutters and reroute the water away from the walk-in door area. So, just wanted to let you guys know that. That's all, that also includes the aluminum seamless gutters, or excuse me, the, oh my goodness. That also includes the steel siding. So, I just wanted to bring that up to you. I can go make copies and bring this back to you, so you have this for your records. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Jacob, did you have anything? Okay. Move on. Next on the agenda, we have, we have a nine o'clock scheduled, but we're not there yet, so we'll move on to number eight, regular business, letter A, action to approve abatement 23-16, an abatement application made by RS Properties LLC for parcel number 12320-10950-111-10, an amount of $350.27. Is there a motion to approve?
Move of approval.
Sir, second? Okay, discussion, comments?
Yeah, this abatement is for a storage unit property. There was one 24 by 26 garage on that property that was destroyed in the May 2022 derecho storm. The owner notified us of this about two weeks ago, so we can take care of this by way of abatement. The amount is from that date through the end of the year for the value of that building.
All right. Further discussion, comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter B, action to approve Resolution 23-35, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2024 John Deere 772G based upon the price, established through the State of Minnesota bid process. Is there a motion to approve?
Move of approval.
Second. Discussion, comments?
If we move forward with this, this motor grader is, would be scheduled to be here before the end of the year.
Discussion, comments, further? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to approve Resolution 23-36, a resolution amending the joint cooperative agreement with the management of the Brookings City County Government Center. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
So, what this does is it, it allows myself and the city manager or deputy city manager making some expenditure decisions to do that as long as, as long as we stay within the operational budget of the government center for the fiscal year that we're notify the Joint Powers Board members of what those expenditures are, especially if it's something that's maybe outside the routine expenditures, but still fits within that budget. There was like a $5,000 limit, and if it went above that, then we had to go to the Joint Powers Board to get some direction. The problem that we're running into is we have some of these kind of more emergency-type purchases. They'll fit within our budget. The Joint Powers Board meets quarterly. So, just to try, try to not have to wait on some of those things quite so long. They're calling special Joint Powers Board meetings to deal with some of those things. And again, it's, you know, within the budget authority of the budget that's been provided, and then also notifying the Joint Powers Board members.
I guess that was my question, that the county or the city just to do something on their own?
Correct. No, no. We would have that discussion, you know, between myself and, and usually it's the deputy city, city manager Jake Meshke, and then we would share that information now with the Joint Powers Board members. And then if, at that point, there's some additional questions, and we feel we, we need to wait for a meeting or call a special meeting, we can still do that. But it just allows us to kind of keep moving things forward a little bit quicker than what we're able to do now.
All right, discussion, comments. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Letter D, an action to approve Agreement 23-48, the State of South Dakota Department of Public Safety Office of Urgent, of Emergency Management 2024 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Yes, sir. This is the annual agreement. This is where the State of South Dakota acts as a funnel for federal funds to come in, and they pay a portion of my 75% of my base salary and then 25% of Richard's salary to assist the county in funding my position. And it's, it's voluntary. If you want the money, you sign the document. If you don't want the money, you don't sign the document. And we have been using this in the budget process. So, I recommend approval.
All right. Further discussion, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action to approve Agreement 23-49, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county roads made by Brookings Dual Rural Water System in Argo Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, comments? Brian on that?
Be straightforward. It's just repairing some water line along 197th Street.
All right, sounds good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter F is an action to approve a right-of-way certificate for project number BRO-B8006 (56), PCN08MJ. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second. Okay. Discussion, comments?
This is a, a local federal bridge grant we received, and this is just kind of the final piece of the paperwork. Once this is completed and sent back to the state, then it's going to be bid out. Probably looking at construction, probably the earliest we'll see construction is 2025. And this bridge is located on the, in the northeast corner of the county, along County Road 44.
All right. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter G, an action to approve the low bid to ARS, a Tectra American Company LLC for the courthouse roof replacement project in the amount of $387,725. Is there a motion to approve?
Move of approval.
Second.
Second. Comments, discussion?
Bids were opened on August 30th. This low bid was submitted by ARS. Design Arc, you can see in the letter in front of you that was in your packet, is recommending that we accept this low bid. There was a unit price not provided as part of the bid, but the county has the ability or the authority to waive irregularities in bid. So, and the next step is getting that official contract in place, and we hope to have something in front of you at the next meeting for your review, maybe not approval, not approval at that meeting, but for your review. There were two bids that were submitted. Let's see here.
All right. Any other comments, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H, action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County for reimbursement for a four-wheeler in the weed and pest department in the amount of $6,800. Receipt number 00651160 through general ledger line 101-4-615-4340. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
This is just the insurance reimbursement from the four-wheeler, the weed four-wheeler.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter I, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a deputy state's attorney. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion, comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter J, action to declare items of surplus property to be sold via online auction. Is there a motion to approve?
Move of approval.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
Many, okay, many of these items, I just wanted to point out, have not been used in quite some time, but probably have some use left in them. So, I'll let Jenna take it from here.
Yeah, I was just going to let you guys know that this is just a list of items that is coming from the highway department, and we will be selling these on the online auction in the near future.
All right. Further discussion, comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter J, action to declare items of surplus property to be sold via, oh, did that, sorry. Letter K, I think we should, we hold off on this one because we have the nine o'clock. Take more than that stuff there, too. So, couple minutes shy of our, our public couple minutes shy of our, our public hearing here, um, so. Okay, just, uh, we've changed up our, our scheduled agenda items, um, they are all gonna be at nine o'clock moving forward, and then you'll see on the agenda, and we'll take them one at a time, how they are on the agenda. So, that clock says nine o'clock, so we're gonna start here with schedule item, uh, agenda items number seven. Letter I, this is a public hearing in action to approve a special events license for J and A Diedrick LLC doing business as J Street Pub for an event in Bennett Barn on Saturday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Okay, we will open this up for a public hearing, and all proponents, please come forward, all proponents for the public hearing. Please, uh, pull the microphone close to you and, and, uh, introduce yourself, please.
Yep, I'm Andrea Diedrick, I'm the owner of J Street Pub, so we're, um, doing a wedding at the Bennett Barn on the sixteenth, and looking to have that liquor license.
Okay, great, thank you. Any more proponents? More proponents? Are there any opponents for the public hearing, any opponents? Hearing none will close the public hearing and open it up to comments and public, or excuse me, comments and discussion. Sheriff, any concerns? All right. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, number two, a public hearing in action to approve resolution twenty-three dash thirty-three, a resolution authorizing the submission of a community development block grant application. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we will open this to public hearing, uh, any proponents to this resolution, please come forward, any proponents?
Uh, good morning, my name's Mason Widenbach, and I'm with First District out of Watertown, and so we are doing this community development block grant with the Brookings Ivy Center, um, it'll be to expand their facility, um, and apply up to two million dollars of C D B G funding from the state, so.
Okay, good, all right, thank you, any other proponents? Any other proponents? Are there any, oh, okay.
Good thing I shoot from the hip.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Robin Urz, I'm a clinician with the Brookings Behavioral Health, um, agency here in town, um, and yeah, um, couple of issues that we've run into and, and, uh, I might like to address are a significant increase in staff over the last two and a half years, um, and a significant increase in our clientele in the last couple of years, we've had significant increase in need, um, hence we've worked diligently to, uh, increase our staff as well. Um, a couple of programs I might highlight are our system of care grant that we received last year. This is a unique program that we have at our agency that allows us to address not only the individuals' needs, but to reach out and capture more of a family-based, um, service for that individual, um, and surround them with the services and counseling and, uh, needs that they may identify as an entire family. Um, that has proven to be very, very successful, but what it's also done is significantly increased our numbers in contact. Um, we've expanded from two case managers to four case managers. We've added, um, in the last eighteen months, I'd say, eight to nine clinicians, um, in order to meet the need. I'm sure you've heard ad nauseam the increase of need, um, post COVID, we've seen significant increase. We are the only entity in town that I'm aware of, and Lord knows I could be wrong, that responds twenty-four seven to crisis calls within the county. We've seen over a thirty percent increase in that, um, particular genre, um, identifying increased needs in anxiety, depression. We've also expanded our services into the schools, um, we're now in all the schools in the Brookings County area, um, and with college coming back, we're gearing up to get ready for that, as you might imagine. Um, we also have a significant care population that we serve, um, and we've seen an increased need for that population. And I apologize, I was not prepared for this, um, but if I can answer any questions, I'd be willing to do that.
Well, thank you, you did a good job, even though you weren't prepared.
I try, I apologize.
No, thank you.
Good morning, Angie Borzma from ID Eight Architecture, we're working on the design of the proposed project for Brookings Ivy Center. It gets important to recognize that, uh, it's a little bit atypical for the county to be the sponsor of a community development block grant in certain instances, but in this particular case, because Brookings um, county is the entire catchment area for the Ivy Center, we have the opportunity to impact not just the city of Brookings, but all of our area school districts and all of our area rural communities because the agency covers that entire territory. So we appreciate your consideration of this, um, funding request and the proposal that's in front of you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more proponents, any more proponents? Okay, are there any opponents to the resolution, any opponents? Hearing none will close the public, uh, discussion and open it up for commission discussion. Any comments?
Chairman, uh, just a couple of quick comments, thank you, uh, very much here, uh, Mason, I appreciate you coming down. First District is assisting the county and putting this, uh, community development block grant together. Uh, I'll have to correct a little bit later, I had one point two, it's two million we requested in the block grant, hopefully getting one point two. Or somewhere close to that figure from, uh, the state or the, the block grant. Uh, started the process primarily because of the commitment Brookings County has made to the Ivy Center along with the city of Brookings, each is, is, uh, pledged one point two million dollars to the project. The project costs will be a little bit higher than that because there, obviously the need for a larger facility has manifested itself since we started the process to, to where we are now. Uh, we'll talk about some of the needs in the letter that we need to approve here next. Uh, at some point, uh, this funding has to be in place to complete the entire project. So we have funds available to meet the match grant from the C D B G, as Mason. Uh, those folks are putting together, thanks to him and Alex, but we have the money, the funds available to match the two million if we get that, so that would put us at four million, which gets us a little closer. There will be some requests for some, uh, uh, fundraising as we move the project along to, to complete the entire project. We're looking at probably, and Angie can correct me if I'm wrong, but probably almost two years before this is a completed project. Uh, obviously, we have to go out to bids, we have to, you know, hopefully don't have enough increase in cost, uh, as we move into next spring. Uh, we'll have a construction phase that'll allow us to move offices from one to the new one when it's finished, and then do some remodeling in the, the new existing facility and add additional facilities in phase three. To handle the issues we have right now, or they have, uh, I'm sitting, sitting around the board as a commission member. The, uh, space needs are immediate, so we've leased some space, we're in the process of leasing some space uh, and putting staff off, off-site in order to handle all this, uh, need, and, uh, visiting a little bit with Mary Beth Fishback, our, our director. We could be up to six weeks behind on some requests for mental health services, and that's just not acceptable in Brookings County to be that far behind. Uh, we'd like to be, yeah, immediate, obviously it'd be the best place for us to be as far as the, the need, so, uh, fully, uh, uh, approve this resolution and the one coming up.
Further discussion, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, letter A, under number two, is action to approve a letter of support to Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness C D B G grant submission. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Again, I think we have in there somewhere, right, a second sentence, is an additional one point two million, should be, uh, revised to two million.
I think that, saying we're we're putting up one point two, right?
Right, but this is a request for the community development block grant to, uh, for two million, not one point two.
Okay.
That's correct, Mason, correct? Our application is for two million.
So we want to change, uh, the one point two to two, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments or additions or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, letter three, or excuse me, number three here, uh, public hearing in action to approve resolution twenty-three dash thirty-four, adoption of the twenty twenty-four provisional budget for Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, we will open this up, public hearing, for all proponents, all proponents for this resolution. Hearing none, is there any opponents to resolution twenty-three thirty-four, any opponents? Hearing none will close the public hearing and open it up for comments and discussion.
So this is the provisional budget, the first step that we take, uh, to get to our annual budget. Um, this document, um, this four-page document that spells out department by department what each budget um, is requesting for twenty twenty-four was included in your packet. Um, we kind of go to the, the last page, each, um, each fund is balanced, um, there is no cash applied or reserves being used at this time except for Register of Deeds Relief Fund, you can see, um, it's so small, sixty-five hundred dollars there being used, um, to balance that, that's fine, that's that, that is a specific fund for very specific uses in the Register of Deeds office, and those dollars have to be used for those purposes, so I, I have no concerns there. Um, there may be some changes between the provisional budget and the annual budget, which gets adopted in, in two weeks. Um, we had, I think centrally assessed utilities came in, and those will have to make some, some minor adjustments there, um, so what you will see at the next meeting is a spreadsheet that shows the changes from provisional to annual, and those will need to be approved along with the annual budget. Um, you know, you know, if there's discussion here on some additional changes or any changes that you would like to see, um, now is the time to have that discussion, otherwise we just move forward uh, with anything that has kind of come across, uh, come through our, our offices, either mine or the finance office between now and annual budget approval.
Discussion, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, number four, second reading, public hearing, in action to approve ordinance twenty-three dash zero two, an ordinance establishing the requirements, fees, and regulations for the issuance of alcoholic beverage licenses within Brookings County. Um, we start with a motion to approve? Yeah, we need a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, we will open this up to a public hearing, and all proponents, all proponents for this resolution. Seeing none, are there any opponents, any opponents to this, actually ordinance, any opponents? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and open it to comments and discussions from the commission. Comments, discussion?
The discussion was that we were going to, um, uh, create a fee set at a hundred and fifty dollars for the application for special events licenses, and then increasing the number of a spent, a number of special events licenses that one entity can be, uh, issued per calendar year, so from three to six, that's what those changes were. In the meantime, as we were publishing this to be approved, there was some question on, um, on this section three, consumption on county property about you know, locations under the joint control of the city and county. I think when this was drafted, that was speaking, um, that really was speaking to the, this building, the government center, but then there became some questions about the joint jurisdiction area. Um, so in, in discussions with, um, with, with Dan, we thought there's probably some clarification language needed in this paragraph that says the government center rather just under joint control to make sure that that's clear. And then, um, we could also add language so there isn't any question about the joint jurisdiction area that if there is a property that's owned ag, um, and, and that's the, that's the location that the event is being held, then that would be approved by the county as well, similar to what our joint jurisdiction ordinance says now, anything that's owned ag is, is the county's responsibility. Um, however, if we kind of stop what we do and make those changes, we'd have to go back and redo this, have the first reading notice it, have the public hearing again for the second reading. So I think what we could do today is you could go ahead and approve this ordinance with the changes that were noted in yellow with the special events license fee and then the number of licenses. And we can go forward with that process and get that portion of it done, approved, and established within the ordinance. Um, the other piece, then we could, um, start over, and I could bring something back here at an upcoming meeting with proposed language changes for this portion of the ordinance. Um, and then we would basically go through the first reading and second reading portions of that again. Those are, I guess I would suggest maybe just going ahead and approving it because I know, um, there's maybe some other events coming up this fall that would be affected by this if we don't get this done now, and there would be some additional wait time, because we're looking at probably up to another five, six weeks if we start over again.
Comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How many locations are under the joint control of the city and the county besides this building? Are there any other buildings?
There are, that's it.
No other locations?
Well, it's just the, the joint jurisdiction area.
I'm just talking, speaking on just locations governed by both the city and the county that, that have joint control, um, buildings.
Right.
Is it just this building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I, I agree, I think we should pass this because, uh, time is of the essence, uh, for that, and I, and I, this has been in there previously, and we haven't had, you know, any concerns or there, and so I think it's more of a just a explanation, a little better explanation rather than, uh, an issue that's come up, so I don't think we should hold this up, and if we need to do this later, we can do it later. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Crookman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, that ends our number seven scheduled agenda items. Number eight, regular business and we'll go to letter K, discussion and possible action of rural access infrastructure funds to township culvert projects. We'll open it up for discussion.
So I did reach out to DOT about, you know, some of the questions that we had with getting townships, some funding for these rural access infrastructure projects. Not just at the final where they pay 100% and then we wait till the end because of cash, some cash flow concerns. Basically, what I was told was how we distribute the money is basically up to the county commission. So I guess I'm, you know, what I would like to just hear from the commission if you're comfortable with that. I can work with these individual townships, maybe have some cash flow concerns about, you know, doing, getting the culverts ordered and then getting me that, that invoice. I don't want to pay vendors. I don't think that would be appropriate and I think it's, you know, kind of a gray area. I mean, we need to be paying these townships directly for these funds to keep it clean. But, you know, for instance, you know, they get culverts ordered, they can get me that part of the bill, the invoice, and then I can get them pay their 80% back rather than waiting for the entire project to be complete. I guess, any thoughts?
Has any of the townships. Given you any preference what they would like to see or?
No, I mean, I've heard from some townships that say we can, we have the funds to do the project and we'll submit the final bills to you and you can reimburse us back. I've heard that, you know, some can't, they have their 20%, but they don't have. You know, to be able to pay, but if we can get them a cut back, you know, fairly quickly, which, you know, working with the finance office, I think we can get that done fairly quickly, have a quick turnaround on those. Shouldn't be, that would help them rather than having them front 100% of the project. I really haven't heard from too many though, just a couple, so.
Well, that, that should be helpful for them if they can get an invoice to you and be reimbursed as soon as we prove it at a meeting, I'm sure.
Well, the funds actually were approved when we approved the project back in January, so I think what we would do is depending on the situation, if they need money sooner, we can get a check cut. You'd still approve it, you know, through a special, you know, packet here at, at the next commission meeting, but not necessarily waiting for a commission meeting to cut that check so we can get those funds turned around a little bit quicker. Because if you recall back in January, you had to approve all of these projects anyway, so. The commission has already approved these projects, so, and approved that 80% funding for them, so.
Would be looking for a motion, if we can take action on this too? How would we say that?
I don't know that you need. Action or you can just direct me to work with the townships that, you know, to get the, the funding distributed and on an as-needed basis. I mean, if you can direct me to do that, I think I can work within those parameters.
And have you talked with Lori about keeping track, are you keeping track of, of what payment's been made and how that's going to go?
I am keeping track of that.
Okay. Alright, everybody okay with that? Ever consensus to be able to get an invoice and get it paid?
Yep.
Cash flow purposes? Alright, sounds like we're good. Alright. Number nine, commission department directors report.
As part of my packet, the updated work plan. Can see items in red were new, new additions to the work plan. So that, Brian sent me the information about the big and local federal bridge grant projects that, that are, that are out there. The five-year plan, we're at our October 10th meeting, we'll be looking at that and having that public hearing on that five-year plan for 2024. There's some updated information there on the rural access infrastructure funding. 214th Street Project, we do have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 8:30 with that group, Commissioners Jensen and Vanderwall. We'll be meeting again with, with Banner to get some updates on where we're at with that H&amp;H study. The I-29 overpass, that is open, ribbon cutting was held a couple of weeks ago now. We do have some dollars left to pay for the county's portion of that. I'll be working with the city to get that billed out. Drainage, Bob did send me some updates on drainage that you can see there in red about that Midary Township Drainage Project. About 85,000, just over 85,000 spent on that since that started in 2020. Samara Avenue Project, again. The county is committing another 500,000 from the commission projects funds for a total of 1 million towards that project for that county road. Some other things under commission projects funds, the courthouse roof, the upgraded generator for this building for 2024 and Samara Avenue. We have about 900,000 in that of those funds left to allocate just by, just shy of that dollar amount. Some capital improvement information, again, the new generator for this building here at the government center for next year. Courthouse, the new roof, again, just approved bids today. Highway was outpatching the parking lot last, last week. We're looking at doing some sidewalk repairs over there yet this fall. And then highway, just the brew shop bid that was approved at our last meeting. So those are the updates unless you have anything else that you would like to see at or discuss with that. If not, the also included in my packet were proposed resolutions for the county convention that is next Tuesday and Wednesday. So what happens with these, these get submitted by counties or different commission or districts throughout the state, propose these resolutions, they go to the resolutions board, the SD with our, within our association and they provide a recommendation. And then at the general business meeting on, it'll be Wednesday next week, that we vote on these resolutions. Each county only gets one vote. So if you've had a chance to look over these and have some discussion here today on how, maybe kind of what direction you're thinking. Also, what happens at the convention is on Tuesday, kind of the last item of business for the day on Tuesday is each association gets together collectively, like our 10-county group and discusses each of these resolutions and, and they kind of have a caucus on these resolutions to discuss them before the next day when it's the general business session and, and they are voted on. So if you would like to go through them now, we can do that or if you need some more time to look at them and you would like to let. I believe it's Ryan and Sean and Kelly are the ones that will be attending the meeting next week. Thoughts?
Comments on them? Feel strongly both ways? Is any opposition to them? I guess that would be, I mean. Do these, have you heard, do these have a pretty good chance of passing or do we know if anybody's?
The resolutions committee on all of them. Is recommending do pass on all of them, it looks like, so. After being vetted by the resolutions committee.
Obviously, we haven't put any of these in. And there again, they're just resolutions for requests for the legislature and that kind of stuff, so it doesn't mean it's a done deal.
No.
They're just, it's our association is recommending these to the legislature to pass these. It doesn't mean it's going to happen, but. Our association would then be, I'm guessing, would be behind them as an advocate and lobby for them as they go through the legislature. If that's a requirement. Okay, well, we will, if you guys have any comments, we'll get closer there. Like I said, we'll be voting on these.
And again, on, on, as part of my report, I did have on the dates again for department head reviews. Kristen, if she hasn't already, she'll be getting the department head self-evaluations out to each of you. I think she's gotten those out already. Then you will all send evaluations of each of the appointed department heads back to Kristen by September 25th. Or, sorry, 27th. Usually what you do for me is send your evaluations to Ryan who compiles them into, into one eval and then he'll bring that to to the October 10th meeting. So my evaluation from each of you can be sent to Ryan. The other thing that came in kind of later last week was the summer study. Is asking counties and specifically commission, commissions to answer some, some questions. Some of these are, are pretty easy and I could kind of go through and answer yes or no if your county is approaching a state of insolvency. No, in your work on the current budget. And in each budget over the past five years, has your county cut or reduced any services due to budget constraints? I don't think we've cut services due to any budgets constraints. Are there any services you believe your county should stop funding? That's maybe a bigger question. Does your county have a diminishing budget reserve? We can take a look at that. Does your county have any open positions? We can look at that. The other question commissioners really, commissioners really need to answer, if your county received an additional 5% of revenue, how do you anticipate such money would be used? Please provide specific applications, including which fund, for example, general fund for payroll, road and bridge fund, et cetera. And then one that I had shared with Dan is in each of the past by budget year, budget years, how many court cases have you had where the defense cost exceeded $10,000 and provide details on that. They want these back by, well, it says Thursday, September 5th. I'm hoping it's the 7th. So I guess how would you like me to go about a couple of those questions I really can't answer? You know, are there services you believe your county should stop funding? And the 5% of additional revenue, I guess those are probably the two that I can't necessarily answer. I think those are pretty. Those are more opinion type questions and then of course the court case question, I wouldn't be able to answer that either, so. This is information they want that the summer study committee is looking at. And again, I think it's the second day, right away in the morning on Wednesday out at the convention next week. That summers, that summer study committee is holding their, I believe it's their final meeting. Couple hours have been set aside for everyone to attend that session of that summer study committee. In Sioux Falls, yes. Yep. And I can send this out to each of you and you could send me your thoughts individually and I can kind of compile those. I guess, I don't know, what are your thoughts? Any direction on that?
It's really kind of a tough one to try and answer off the top of my head. If we're, our intent is to help counties that don't have sufficient funds get funding, then I look at the 5% and say, oh yeah, we, we want it, what would we use it for? Those counties probably need it a lot for payroll more than anything else and I think if we were to request an extra 5% payroll, it'd probably be obvious place we would, we would supplement the general fund for payroll expenses. As far as highways and roads and bridges, possibly we'd put that in there. I don't know what else we would say we'd use the 5% for. This is too off the top of my head.
If we concur on that one, that one's answered, we don't have to answer that one.
Right.
The wages or road and bridge one?
I mean, if we, if we, as I say, we don't need the 5%. Overall, that, that doesn't help the counties that don't have the funds we have.
There's nothing we would really stop. Is there?
I can't think of any that we would drop, no. I mean, smaller counties, as you look at the road and bridge funding, part of it would be turning asphalt into gravel roads as, as part of an area that they cut expenses and, you know, we're not going to do that. We don't have any that would be appropriate for that, so.
And I don't know if the question, I mean, the way it's worded, worded is, you know, if your county stops funding that, you know, what, are they asking that this is a service that you want the state to start picking up? I don't know. That's not how it's, if they were asking that question, I would think it would have been more along the lines of, you know, what, what county services do you believe the state should provide funding for rather than counties? I think that would have been a better question. And I mean, it's as far as counties stopping services, I don't know that there's any service that we necessarily provide that, you know, that you'd want to see. Stop.
Really isn't a question in there that says what do you want the state to pay more for other than the 5%?
Right, yeah.
I kind of want to know what you'd do with the 5%.
Stop services, increase services, what would you use it for?
Well, I think, I mean, when you say services, is it like law enforcement? Is it fire protection? Different things like that that may be expensive because these larger counties have a long ways to go. And they just say, we can't, we can't afford to provide that service anymore. And so, you know, obviously I don't think that's in the cards for us or anything, but it might be some type of, when they mean services, it might be stuff like that.
Again, falls under, falls under payroll a lot of, a lot of times.
Some of them small counties, it could be departments. They might not have a wee department, might not have.
Correct.
Welfare or, I mean, any, any of those departments that.
Yeah.
We want discontinuum, but the small county might have.
Veterans affairs.
Yeah.
And then they can look at consolidating more regional type of stuff where veteran affairs offer covers, officer covers three counties rather than one. So fortunately, we're not in that situation, so, but unfortunately, there are some counties that are, and so. Do we need any other questions off of that?
I don't think so. I can.
Give me a call if you have a question or something.
Yep. And then other than that, just upcoming dates, like I said, convention. Day is the golf, no one, I signed up for that, so Tuesday. Gets, Tuesday and Wednesday is the actual fall convention. I'd have to look at the agenda. I don't have the agenda here in front of me exactly when that gets going on Tuesday morning, but. I know I have something right away in the morning, but I don't think it's going until maybe closer to 10 for. but I don't think it's going until maybe closer to ten for, uh, other conference attendees. You, uh, the commissioners were invited on, for those of you not going to convention on Tuesday, United Way Volunteer Appreciation Ice Cream Social is there, and I believe there was some information in my, with my reporter in maybe correspondence received on that. The First District Annual Picnic is coming up at the end of the month. Other than that, again, the Tuesday, the tenth, if you don't, make sure they have that on their calendar, that afternoon, we'll be doing those department head evaluations from one to five. And then did get a save the date for the mayor's holiday celebration on December, December sixth, a little ways out yet, but that was a new one too that we got to save the date for, so, that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for Stacy?
Before we go into reports, uh, looking back at our letter for the support of the Brookings Behavioral Wealth and Health Wellness CDBG grant submission, we changed the wording to two million, I think we needed to change a couple other things in that. My concern is it doesn't say, I helped draft this, but it should say, instead of an additional, a two-million-dollar CDBG funding request for 2023, so that does say CDBG funding request. Can we do that with, or do we have to motion reconsider and change that wording?
Yeah, I think, I think it was just a...
Clerical...
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say CDBG funding request in that first paragraph. It does say it towards the bottom of the letter, but at the same time, I don't want them to think that we're, we're going to support them with an additional two million out of ours.
Right, so get rid of an additional one-point-two million and, and turn around and say continuing to, in support of the Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness application for two-million-dollar CDBG grant?
Yeah, with a...
Something like that.
A two-million-dollar in CDBG funding request for 2023. Because we're making the request.
Yep.
Just a little clarification that I don't want to get hung up on later. Would you agree, Mason, does that sound better? This letter was support of the application itself. Do we need an additional letter that says we, well, what we can do is we can go back to where we, we approved the one-point-two million and, uh, we have that in our record somewhere, so we can provide that for you, so you have that. We should probably get that from the city also. Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure those, that, there's a lot of hoops to jump through for the CDBG grants, and you gotta, you gotta cross all the Ts, not all the Is, and then go back and do it again, uh, before you submit it, because it could, it could stop the whole request, so. I'm trying to be careful as I can with the request, yeah.
Yeah, this is a, on our agenda, a letter of support for the Brookings Behavioral Health, their, their submission, so it makes sense that this is support. And then if you need documentation, that we've already approved one-point-two.
Yeah, we'll need to provide that documentation for the one-point-two million, and we've got that in a resolution back in, when we approved the budget for twenty-three, right?
No.
I think it was...
It was a motion for commission project funding.
Funding.
Yeah, wherever it was, we must have a motion for, we can provide to, to Mason.
Some minutes.
Put in our application, and we'll ask the city for the same thing.
All right, we'll make those changes.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, uh, number ten, State's Attorney's Office Report. All right. Commissioners' Reports and Discussion Items, we'll start with Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the Pipeline Debate at the Dakota Bank Center, well-attended, and along with the rest of you, I attended, uh, the New Interstate Exit Ribbon Cutting on August twenty-three. And then as Bob referred to, um, on August thirty-first, I attended here at the City-City Building, the brief Midary Township diversion channel on the Big Sioux River Project. That's all I have to report.
All right. Mr. Bartley?
Short report on the twenty-second, also. Debate, it was well-attended. On the twenty-third, the interchange ribbon cut. Senator Thune and Representative Johnson, uh, well-attended also, good weather for that. Had a few short CDBG grant phone calls with First District. That's my report.
Mr. Jensen?
On the twenty-second, also attended. Bank Center. On the twenty-third, the... I'd like to thank everybody involved with, uh, setting up that, that event. On the twenty-ninth, I did miss some Midary Township Drainage Meeting, but on the thirtieth, I did go into zoning office and had an in-depth review from Bob and, uh, Richard, like thanking them for that, so, that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Hostler?
Sounding just like every... To Pipeline. Center, uh, it was a well-attended crowd. The twenty-third, also, the I-29 exit ribbon cutting, uh, it was very, very neat to see what, uh, what Boz did for that, what, that area and the video board and everything to show the progress, that was very nice. That's my report.
All right. Uh, I... On the twenty-second. Uh, like Commissioner Hostler, I want to thank Boz, they put a lot of work into making that area, uh, really nice place to have that get-together and, um, and just, it looks like they, they went over and above to, to make that a really good spot to have that overpass, and it was well-attended, so a lot of people to thank there, and, uh, it's nice that that project got done with the collaboration of all governments involved, so. After that, I went to our beta meeting, we had our monthly beta meeting, and looked at numbers there, and, uh, they're working on expanding some services here through SDSU, having some discussions on that. They're also talking the rabbit ride, uh, the evenings of Friday, where they have, uh, after-hours evenings for the students for the, are to trying to, uh, expand that if we can. Basically, the reason we're struggling is, uh, having employees and monitors on those buses, uh, to be able to get them to, to do that, so. But they'd like to try to expand that as much as we can, uh, to, uh, to offer the, those people that are staying late at the establishments downtown, so they can get home safely. And then also on the twenty-eighth, they had Brookings Health Board meeting, and, uh, and that went well there also, um, they're working on their pillars and, uh, really doing a great job of their strategic plan and moving forward on that, and, uh, the balance sheet looks really well for them, um, seems to be hitting budget and over and above budget, so, uh, so far, halfway through the year, they've, uh, they've done well, so. That's all I have. All right. Is number twelve, Executive Session. In accordance to South Dakota Codified Law one-dash-two-five-dash-two, numbers one and six, Personnel and Security, is there a motion to enter Executive Session?
Who to approve?
Tagging.
There any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. We don't have any other scheduled items after this, so after Executive Session, we will adjourn.